Hopefully they see me in the back. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. This is the planning board meeting of Monday, July 28, 2025. PAC TV is providing the service live on Comcast Xfinity Government Access Channel 9. Those without cable visit YouTube for live streaming. Okay, got a pretty brief agenda here. So we're going to start with a Form A, and this is for 145 Washington Street and Zero Misty Meadow Road to combine assessors parcel number D1418 with an area of 513,758 square feet with parcel D14131 with an area of 16,038 square feet to create parcel A comprising a total area of 529,796 square feet. To divide parcel A into lot one with an area of 41,529 square feet, lot two with an area of 47,327 square feet, lot three with an area of 42,309 square feet, lot four with an area of 43,798 square feet, lot five with an area of 40,110 square feet, and lot six with the remaining area of 314,723 square feet. All right?
All right. Good evening. My name is Eric Schumaker. I'm a civil engineer with McKenzie Engineering Group and representing our client, the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Boston. I went to Pembroke High School, graduated in 2012, so it's good feedback here. But anyways, our site here is 145 Washington Street and Zero Misty Meadow Road, which is parcel buddy Misty Meadow Road. A little bit about the existing conditions. The total land area is about 513 square feet, 11.79 acres for 145 Washington Street and 16,038 square feet, or about .37 acres for Zero Misty Meadow Road. As currently constructed, 145 Washington Street consists of a developed church building with associated parking area, some utilities, there's some drainage lines in there, septic leaching field for the rectory, and a garage. The site at Zero Misty Meadow Road is undeveloped woodlands, and we're located in the town of Pembroke Residential A zoning district and the North Pembroke Historic District overlay. Site's located in a FEMA Zone X, and we're bordered by residential properties on all sides. The topography slopes towards this wetland here at the rear of the lot. We range in elevation from roughly 77 at the northern corner of the site to 42 down at that wetland. That's generally where the flow of runoff is directed. And so we'll move on now to just the reason why we're here, the A and R plan. We filed a Form A application in front of you, and this plan to create five single-family lots as well as lot six here, reserved for the subdivision that was filed with the planning board as well, and that'll be on the agenda, I believe, in a month. So as you noted, the purpose of this plan is to combine 145 Washington Street and Zero Misty Meadow Road to create these five parcels. We can discuss the land areas if needed. They're all over the minimum requirement of 40,000 square feet. They all have the required frontage and the 150-foot circle inscribed in each lot. And you can see down here to the bottom left of the plan is a land usage table that outlines the requirements of the Pembroke zoning bylaw in that district, so I can answer any questions the board may have.
I checked it meets all the requirements.
Yep. Meets all the requirements for Form A lot, single-family lot. This is residential commercial, but anything it's allowed in Residence A is also allowed here, so that would, as far as zoning is concerned, work with the Form A lots. So, any other questions or concerns from the board?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve approval not required plan number 25-03, 145 Washington Street and Zero Misty Meadow Road.
And this will be signed by the vice chair. Correct? Okay. So I have a motion.
Yeah, last one here signs it.
Yes, right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks for your time. Do I pick up the Mylar tonight?
We can sign it now.
Okay.
Because Scott's not here, that's why. You've got to sign it. And because you were the last one.
No.
I think that, is that my one?
This is not, that's my one.
That's my one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to our next order of business, which is an informal meeting with Matt Armstrong concerning site plan 1-23-23, Winter Street Storage Building, and this is a discussion on a temporary occupancy permit.
Yes. How you guys doing tonight?
Good.
So, yeah, 23 Winter Street Pembroke, 5,000 square foot warehouse. I should have brought a board like him, but.
This is concerning the gas bill, correct?
Yeah.
And getting a temporary occupancy permit because the work is not completed?
Yes. So we're gonna wait till the fall to do loom planting, just so the plants don't die, and then act of that, final coated asphalt.
Okay.
So we just wanted to wait till September to complete that work. We're looking for 90-day temp occupancy.
Okay. So as you know.
Matt, I mean, yeah, can you speak in?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So as you know, we've gotten the letter from Deb Merrill that's included in your packets. So this outlines what is needed to be done before we can do a final occupancy permit. However, they're requesting a temporary occupancy permit. The building inspector is also conferred with them on this. What they've submitted here also is a total cost of the outstanding items that you would provide us with a cash bond for or a cash to hold.
We can do that, yeah.
Okay, and that's $39,000.
Okay.
So if you give us a check for $39,000, we'll hold on to that, and once the items are completed, we'll give you, we'll let the building inspector give you a temporary occupancy permit pending these complete. You can work out the dates with him.
Okay.
And then, once the work is done, we'll release the funds.
Okay.
Is that, you think that works?
Yep.
Okay.
So I just gotta get the $39,000 check, and then we'll get the temp occupancy?
Yep.
And then, okay.
All right, so why don't we get a vote on the record here for this? So I'll accept a motion to issue or approve. Not approve.
What are we doing, just sending letters to the building inspectors indicating that we're agreeing with this?
Yes, and that we will be in receipt.
We don't issue or approve.
We do not issue or approve, that's correct. We'll guide him and say we'll, we'll.
All right.
What's the word?
Prove.
Recommend. Recommend a temporary building occupancy permit.
Take no exception to him issuing a temporary occupancy.
That sounds even better, so why don't you make the motion?
With the bond.
I move that we send a letter to the building inspectors saying that we take no exception to him issuing a temporary occupancy permit for 90 days upon receipt of the funds of $39,000.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is an informal meeting with animal control officer on zoning bylaw, amending provisions applicable to kennels and related sections thereto to be consistent with an act to increase kennel safety.
Hello, thank you for having me back.
Let everyone know who you are.
My name's Leanne Miel, I'm the animal control officer in the town of Pembroke. We, as a town, are required to have a kennel licensing program. We do not have one in the town of Pembroke. I proposed one back in 2000 when I started, but I think given the fact that the whole COVID thing exploded, it kind of fell to the wayside, so we kind of tabled the idea. The state has come out with some new laws, a law called Ollie's Law, which is to increase the safety in kennels to help prevent more dogs from dying in kennels and daycares and things of that nature. They also are now coming down on those towns that do not have licensing programs. So what I'm asking is that we make our kennel definitions that we already have match those of the state, so it makes it easier, makes it all formal, there's no confusion, and to add in those definitions that we don't have of kennels that I do have to inspect.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I read through it, and I didn't see a huge amount of changes. It was just a word here and there, and a freak here and there.
Yeah.
Well, one that I think has kind of stuck out. So a couple of years ago, we did make a bylaw change to allow pet services.
Right, so that's your, that was, that's what your commercial boarding and training kennel, those would fall under that?
It does.
Yeah, so it's like daycare, a facility that offers, a daycare facility that also offers grooming, training, that all kind of encompasses into that.
Now, was that a state-defined?
That, the commercial boarding and kennel, and training kennel is the state's definition, the one that you have in your packet.
So a commercial boarding or kennel would cover like pet grooming?
So if it is a standalone pet groomer, that is not inspected by animal control?
Okay.
That is, I believe, the health department?
Okay, so here's the problem with that, unless we can get it worked out by council, is that we added that specific use, as it allowed use with a special permit, because it wasn't in those districts. And we had a lot of businesses coming to us and saying, hey, we want to do this grooming service, but you don't allow it. So we went and we changed it and allowed it a couple of years ago. So what my fear is, is if the language isn't clear, then it'll, I don't, I don't know if we lose it or not. I mean, something that we may want to.
I think you still need both permits.
Right now, there are no street grooming facilities in this town. There are two facilities that offer grooming, which would be covered under the commercial boarding because they also offer daycare. We do not have a street grooming facility in this town, and in the commercial boarding definition, it does lay out that a grooming facility operating solely for the purpose of grooming and not for overnight boarding, or an individual who temporarily and not in the normal course of business boards or cares for animals owned by others. That falls under a different, a different section. It would be 39A, Chapter 129, which is not my animal control bylaws.
Okay. But we still have to account for that pet groomer.
We changed the bylaw to make it an allowed use.
Yes.
So it's now allowed, it wasn't allowed.
Right, but this is striking that, but this strikes the language.
Like, she has that stricken completely, that whole section that we.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that won't work.
And it comes out everywhere.
We can't disallow that as a use, because then it just won't be allowed anywhere in town.
Right, so I want to.
You don't need a state license, because it won't be there.
Yeah, so I think you may want to, now, are you conferring with town council on this?
I did.
Okay.
So they were the one that assisted me with this.
Gotcha. Why don't we bring that up specifically and see how we can get that included in this?
Yeah, because I think, didn't they even write that?
They wrote the other one, yeah.
Yeah.
A grooming facility wouldn't follow under me, though, so I don't, I don't know what I have to.
Right.
Would I have to get a different department involved?
It's not your rules, it's zoning rules.
No, no, I'm just asking, would I have to get a different department involved?
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, no, no. We're just saying if that gets struck and out, then we're.
So basically asking for two things.
Yes. Exactly. We want to, we'll get accomplished what you need, but we want to make sure we keep the other in there, too.
Right, right, right.
So you want to keep the pet services facility, you want to keep that?
Yeah, and if we have to.
But that doesn't, that doesn't work for the kennel, that doesn't work for the kennel licensing, they have to be separated now.
But you don't have to license the pet grooming, so it wouldn't affect you anyway.
So we're just seeing a separate definition for those.
But they, these people have to pay for a license, and.
But this is a zoning bylaw.
Right.
It's not your rules and regs, it's a zoning bylaw.
Actually, you know what, now that I look at it, commercial kennels have been struck out of every zoning district.
Yeah.
Therefore, we don't even need a definition of a commercial kennel, because there'd never be one in town.
Commercial kennel is struck, too.
But, yeah, but it's a different, you're asking for, you're creating a different definition of a commercial kennel in this, aren't you?
I think we're mixing up licensing and kennels and zoning.
Exactly. So, Leanne, we understand what, you have licensing requirements under your discretion and what you do.
We may be letting them do something that's illegal under the state, is what we're saying, our bylaw is saying.
Yeah.
That's what she's trying to tell us, like, what we have worded is illegal to the state, right? Because they made, a commercial kennel has certain guidelines, and what we have listed here is not following those guidelines.
Right.
So the state does not allow commercial kennels?
No, the state allows grooming, but just a facility that solely grooming is not considered a kennel.
Does the state, here's my question, does the state allow commercial kennels?
Oh, yeah, that's what that, the definition you have is.
What this does is, means it says no commercial kennels at all, period, the end, in Pembroke. Because it's struck, it's, if it's.
Well, they're just adding a new, isn't this like a new definition of what that was?
So, like, the commercial breeding kennel, commercial boarding and training kennel, but just getting rid of commercial kennel, is that correct?
Yeah, it's like, if you go to Residence A, right, it's.
Right, it's just kind of too much on.
Commercial kennel is knocked out, added back in are commercial boarding, training kennel, commercial breeder, but there's no commercial kennel.
So what we're not. Commercial boarding and training is a, is what you guys consider a commercial kennel, minus the sole grooming, because grooming is not a kennel, it is not considered a kennel.
Right, so then why do we take out the definition of pet services, which makes it clear that it's not the same?
We did.
But why did you, why? That definition you should have, because it's a separate, it's a separate definition from the, from the commercial kennel.
What do we do with that?
And you've got personal kennel.
Because everything.
But where's commercial kennel?
Everything under the pet services facility, minus the grooming, is considered a personal kennel, so we added the personal kennel in. I can add you back in a pet service facility and just make it grooming, if that is, if that, if that suffices.
Well, it's gonna be in here somewhere, you'd think.
But it has to be separate from a kennel.
Why don't we just decide?
We're just calling something kennel that isn't.
We need to take the new definitions and make sure there are uses in the zones.
Yes.
That we want them in, that's what we need to do.
Right.
So what was wrong, what was the main thing in here that was wrong that we had? How about rewind and start that again?
For the pet service facility, it's the grooming, it's the, just an establishment that just does grooming. So we could, we could come up with a pet grooming facility definition, which would suffice that aspect and keep the state's commercial and boarding kennel, which would then cover all the other aspects of that pet service facility. So almost like dividing it?
So, yeah, so what if we incorporated this, the new language from the state as the commercial stuff, and then just take what we had for commercial kennel, you know, reword it so that it just applies to grooming?
Should we just have couple on page look at this?
I think so.
It's their mess.
Because I think we're, I think you're right, we're confusing licensing with zoning.
I think that your commercial kennel, your commercial kennel definition is very similar to the state's commercial boarding and training kennel.
So that also places it.
It is, where the problem resides is with that pet services facility. That's where the problem resides.
Why?
Because it includes grooming. Grooming is not a kennel.
Okay. So we just.
So no kennels can do any grooming?
No, kennels can do grooming, but a facility that only does grooming is not considered a kennel, and they do not need a kennel license.
Right, so that's okay, we don't care about that.
I care about it to do my job.
Yeah, but what we care about is zoning and what's an allowed use.
Right.
So we can't take it out because it doesn't work with your licensing.
Can you, can we adjust it and remove?
No, you have to include, we have to, it has to be included for zoning.
Can we adjust the pet services definition to remove everything that would be in the commercial one and just leave the grooming, and then request an adjustment to the zoning to allow that to be in those locations?
But grooming is not in your new definition.
Because I don't cover grooming, except.
I understand that, but we do.
Okay, so.
Right, so what I'm asking is, can that, can, can we, can I remove, can I propose to remove everything in the pet service definition out, because that's in the commercial boarding and facility?
No.
And then call that grooming and leave that in, leave that in the zoning that it's already in?
I think we want to get an opinion from town council on that.
So what if we remove B and C, which is the training and daycare?
Yeah, I thought about that.
Leave everything up, leave A and leave the grooming, which would allow us to add something.
That's what I just asked you four times, and you told me no.
I think we come, no, I think the approach is come up with the state, follow the state definitions, and then make sure each, decide where we want each of those to be allowed.
Right, but we still have to allow for pet groomers, right?
I'm not asking to not allow for pet grooming, what I ask is exactly what she just said to you, is to remove B and C from the pet services facility, leave the grooming.
Okay.
And you can leave it as pet services facility, we'll put it back in, and then take those two out because they're covered under commercial boarding.
And that's fine.
Is that okay?
That makes sense to me, but I thought we were.
No, I don't want to get rid of, no.
Well, we can't strike pet service facility from all of the other zones that it's allowing.
We need to add that.
So we could just call it pet grooming?
Yeah, could you rename it to pet grooming?
What if we left it pet services in the event we have something in the future come?
Yeah, you know, we could say pet services facility is a business establishment that provides the following services in exchange, and there's two pet grooming, and take the other stuff out, which is covered by the commercial kennels.
Yeah, yeah, or, and have K and P figure out how to, how to do it.
Right, yeah. We'll get it, we'll get it, we'll get it fixed.
We can't be the only town that has this.
No.
There's, not many towns don't have licensing programs yet.
Really?
Yes, it's been something that's been required for a very, very, very long time. They're just, the regulations from the state are coming down, and they're coming down harder, and the regulations on these facilities are coming down harder to make the safety better.
No, I was just, I was just saying that there must be other towns that have, like, you know, the grooming services and need to keep it in somehow.
So a lot of these, it's strange, a lot of these definitions that are here are typically not under the zoning bylaw, they're usually under animal control.
Right.
So I think that's where it makes it a little bit harder, is because they're typically an animal control definition, and then you guys say, okay, we'll allow this one, this one, this one, here, here, and here, and then none of the jumble of definitions and stuff like that then falls on you guys to have to create or come up with, or. But I know that a number of years ago, it was needed because you had businesses that were trying to move into town.
And it has to be kind of addressed in zoning so we know what's allowed.
Oh, sure.
It's not allowed, but it must be consistent with any other, I mean, if this exists in the town bylaw, or maybe under your rules and regs, it has to be consistent in both.
Right, 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 yep, nope, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think this is what you want to do.
Yes.
All right, so why don't we talk a little bit about timing, because this is gonna, you want this on the warrant for the fall town meeting, correct?
Okay.
So we have a timeline, and we want to set up a public hearing, because that's what's required.
Yep.
I want to do that on September 8.
Okay, so we got time.
Okay.
All right, so we'll get some clarity from. All right, so we'll get some clarity from, from council.
Yep.
But we-
Do you need me to be involved in that conversation?
Only if, if, you guys can work it out.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever's best for making it work.
I have one question, the hobby kennels are-
Gone.
Are gone.
Yep.
Right, right, that, um, those fall more under personal kennels?
Okay.
Um, and the number of dogs is changed in the hobby kennels, um, from, I think the town had originally had six to ten, and now it's more than four, so anybody that has five or more dogs is required to get a, a personal kennel license now.
Okay. So we, we want to just get, be, be consistent with your licensing requirements.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate your time and your help.
All right.
Do we need Leanne to come back?
Once that's-
Come back, or?
Um, no.
We can just deal with it behind the scenes.
Let's just work it out.
Okay.
And unless you guys want to see it again, but you're going to see it again, right, before, and we're going to have a public hearing.
Right.
So let's get the details worked out and have it presented at the public hearing.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. Informal meeting with Elizabeth Kennas, Apex Companies, and Joe DiUdi, DPW Director on Zoning Amendments Post-Construction Stormwater Management.
Who is this guy?
Okay.
Obviously. Um, so, obviously it's about the EPA Clean Water Act, and we have to adopt some new language in our bylaws.
So these are post-construction?
Post-construction stormwater, um, requirements.
Okay. Um, one of the reasons why I thought it would be helpful for them to come and kind of explain it, just so we know what we're talking about at a public hearing, and have a good idea of what, what it entails, and why the, the state's requiring this is a change, correct?
It's EPA, correct.
It's EPA?
Yeah, EPA.
Okay.
Yeah, we're out of compliance.
Okay. Um, we're out of compliance because we don't have it reflected in our bylaws, or because-
Correct, we don't have new permit, which is because we don't have new bylaws, it's just language change.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think it's a big problem. We have stormwater bylaws in there now, they just want different verbiage.
Okay.
So is this to do with a subdivision rules and regs?
Correct, building something new.
Yep.
Yeah, they just want to make sure all the stormwater-
So, but when you say post-construction, this after they've filed and has built, but before they go for road acceptance, is that, where does this fall?
Correct, correct.
That's where this falls?
Correct.
And what is this, uh, like, what is this looking for, I guess is my question?
I think it's, nothing's really going to change, it's just EPA.
Okay.
You know, when, when you're building something, they just want all the guidelines and the permitting correct.
It's not adding any, any additional, like-
Like testing?
Testing or anything like that?
I don't know, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We're adapting this from other town bylaws.
Okay.
They say they do it all the time.
Okay.
Meaning Apex.
Okay.
They're going to help us along with this.
Okay.
Um, she wasn't able to make it today, so-
Okay.
I think the next one is, um, public hearing.
September eighth.
And she'll, some will be there with that.
Okay.
They will present us a letter and, um, give us their presentation on it.
Okay, so any background info, Apex can get to Sue ahead of time, just to distribute to the board, so we have an understanding of it, I think would be helpful?
Yeah.
Definitely.
But this is something that we have to put in our bylaws to comply with state law?
Exactly.
If we can get a copy of what some other, other towns have done.
Yeah, and you have KP Law working on this as well?
I will, once Apex is done.
Okay.
Apex will handle all the, um, like Holbrook, for instance, they're using that as a template.
Gotcha.
They're going to, they'll give us that one to show us, and then they'll come in and give the presentation on, you know, we have to obviously go through town council with that as well.
Are we going to try to do this one on September eighth also?
Correct.
I don't think that, according to Apex, that we'll have all this information by their deadline, which is December twenty twenty-five, to, to adapt these new bylaws.
Okay.
They'll give us an extension, EPA will.
Okay.
Okay, well, we should be able to get it in the bylaws at the, at the fall town meeting.
As long as Apex has it.
I see.
There's, there's a lot of work involved in that.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Okay, all right.
To come up with the bylaws, if we're just copying what other people are doing?
We'll find out.
Yeah.
How complex it is, once we get something, and we'll have KP Law look at it, they'll have to review it. How we have meeting on-
So maybe not September.
The September eighth.
This might not be this year, or are we trying for this year?
Well, they're going to give us the public hearing, we're going to give a presentation on that.
Oh, okay.
As far as the complete package, like-
Like language and-
Exact, they don't, they don't know if it's feasible to do in that timeframe.
Okay.
Well, then we may push it off to the spring.
Okay. So we can just open the hearing, and if they're not ready, we can always like continue it and push it till they're ready, or?
I think Apex wants to come in and present it to the town, to show them what they want to do.
Okay.
Could you give us an example of what some of these regulations are like? Is it?
I, I don't have the, to be honest with you.
Is it inspection of the catch basin for four, it loads accepted or?
Runoff, it's leaching fields, it's, it's, um, the, the retention areas, you know, the size of retention areas, um, the hoods, the, what are they called, the, um, eliminations that go in the catch basins for solids to go up in the storm.
This is, so this is after we've done the ASB, we're looking for road acceptance, isn't this all stuff that should be in the design?
It's, it says stormwater post-construction.
I'm still, you know, you see where I'm a little confused here?
That's why it's good to have them here, so they can explain a little bit better than I can.
Sounds like a good premise. So, sorry, can I back up even a little bit? Who is Apex, like what?
Oh, they're an engineering firm.
They're just an engineering firm?
Correct.
That DPW has contracted.
Correct.
But it sounds like a lot of this may not be zoning, it may be, or planning more subdivision rules and regs.
Yeah, but, um, I was thinking about that too, um, but this would apply to any stormwater management, even for a site plan that may be on an existing way, correct?
No.
No.
No, post-construction, so this is anything upcoming, new, like for the gentleman that just presented, Washington Street.
Yeah.
Things like that, nothing that's currently existing now.
No, but what I'm saying is if a new commercial facility is built on a site, say on Washington Street.
Correct.
And if there was a shopping center put in, wouldn't it be required for that project as well?
Yes.
Not just a subdivision?
Correct. Anything, yeah, whether it's a business up the street here, or-
Okay, well, we look forward to hearing from Apex.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Merrill will know about this, because they'll have to be looking for this.
So, so, I know, I'm not, I'm just asking out loud, but it's, so this is going to be something that'll, would be done before ASBills are signed?
I don't-
I know you don't, I, I know, I'm just, or is it like-
When we get a design in, usually, the engineers are following the EPA best management practices in their design.
Unless this is just-
So maybe this is just to check that that was-
That was done?
Actually done, but the engineers go out and check that it is per the plan, so I'm still kind of lost as to what gets checked.
Or, and why it's in zoning.
Or why it's done, and yeah, it's definitely not zoning.
No.
It's less and less like, maybe zoning, I know, it's, it's not really zoning.
I, I don't know if it, if it is.
Unless other towns, maybe other towns-
Well, yeah, but in-
Just not doing it?
It's, it's something that would be in, for instance, we have subdivision rules and regs, right?
Right.
Which are separate from zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So, and in best practices, right, our engineers are always looking at best practice, if, so I don't know if it needs to be enshrined in a zoning bylaw, if you will.
The stormwater bylaws only.
But-
That's in our, that's in our subdivision rules and regs.
Right.
That's not in zoning.
Okay.
It's that, that's kind of where we're going here.
All right.
And stormwater management is sort of site plan is, is, it's part of the site plan.
Okay.
So it's separate, you know, there's different, different stormwater management for different sites and different uses.
Yeah, just to give you an example, like under subdivision rules and regs, we say, you know, you have to limit the peak drainage.
Sure.
You know?
Unless, unless maybe this is-
All, all that's in the subdivision rules and regulations, where we talk about detention base and, and all that stuff.
Yeah.
That's all in the subdivision rules and regulations, none of it is zoning.
Type thing, where we, you know, an added condition.
I believe for subdivision rules and regs, we just have to have a public hearing and a meeting and vote on it. It doesn't go to town council, it doesn't get approved by the attorney general, any of that.
It does not.
Perfect.
So that puts us in probably a really good position to get it done by the end of the year.
Well, I, I, I mean, we need to know whether it needs to be a bylaw change.
That's a good question, if you could find out, what, the other towns, are they doing it?
Yeah.
Is it in their zoning bylaws, or is it in their rules and regs? Or their town bylaws?
You're getting asked all the questions.
No, I can, and I can ask EPA.
Yeah.
I can look in the town bylaws, I have one actually.
Yeah, where, where's it, where's it belong?
I'll find out, I'll know what you know tomorrow.
Okay.
You know what I mean, whether it's zoning or-
Well, some towns, it's the stormwater runoff, like they're, have, they hand that out with every, like, application, they want to know your stormwater issues, with just, if you're building a single-
It's not a zoning bylaw.
Usually given employee zoning in some towns, so I don't know, like, some towns